Paul, the order, the regular meeting of the mall planning commission, August 27. Mr. Grummer, do we have any announcements?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. First off, I just wanted to say, it's been a busy month for the month of August. As most of you know, the mayor made me director of the planning department, so this is certainly trial by fire this first month. We've had a lot of things going on. We just moved into City Hall, which is, that transition's happening right now, so welcome everybody to the first planning commission meeting inside City Hall. We've had some staff changes in the planning department. In the beginning of the month, we eliminated the project coordinator position, and with that, we actually have a job posting right now for a planner two position to fill that, that's more technical, in order to come in and help support plans review and the review process, so that we can spend time on the review, as well as work on things such as small area planning and that. And with that, we also had a promotion within the department. The department merged together. Now it's the Department of Planning and Permits. And with that, our permits clerk, Lydia Dreher, was promoted to the permits and planning technician. So Lydia is here in the audience, and she's helping, supporting that. So we appreciate her, as well as, a lot of changes going on within the department, but as we move forward, I think it's going to help organize and help us move forward on that. So, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. And as I just found out, I'd urge commissioners, please speak into the microphone, we're all a little bit muffled, given our facial wear. All right, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. You all have the minutes in your packets.
And you also need to turn it on.
Turn it on, turn it off.
Thank you, Commissioner Todd. Wow, that's much better. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. You all have the minutes in with your packets. Do I have any comments or corrections to be made to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes that presented.
Do I?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. All right, minutes are approved. I see no public comments on non-agenda items, so we will open the public hearing and move straight to new business. Item number one, the pursuit of excellence daycare, 1501 Club Manor, Suite 3. Mr. Grummer, staff report.
So this is a conditional use permit application for a location that is off of Club Manor Drive. The applicant is proposing a daycare-type facility for children who are having to remote learn and need adult supervision while their parents are working. So currently, this is required by conditional use in a C2 zone. So you'll find, there is a, the analysis was provided to you. Basically, there's, the site characteristics is small asphalt lot surrounded by strip mall style, conformance with municipal plan area zone for commercial use with adjacent land uses, institutional and commercial allow for service and school-type activities. A modified daycare remote learning facility can be accommodated with a conditional use. Quality controls being a daycare remote learning facility. Children will be dropped off, so there should be a limited number amount of increased demand for parking. Fire code enforcement have been consulted, and facilities meet the minimum requirements to support the proposed use. So the summary proposal appears acceptable, no adverse impact noted, so staff recommends approval.
All right, and I have a public comment card from Ms. West, who is also the applicant. Ms. West, for future reference, if you are the applicant, you don't need to fill out a comment card, but you're welcome to come speak to us if you'd like.
Thank you. I just kind of, I just wanted to maybe give a little bit more information about what the center will be. It will be for children, kindergarten through, it was for fifth grade, so kinder through fifth, that's elementary children. Basically, they would be there between the hours of seven and three, basically school hours, Monday through Friday, and they're playing, they're instead of going to school. This is for parents who are not feeling comfortable with their children at school at this time, but they do need to work. So we're finding that a lot of people are having some issues finding places to take their children, boys and girls clubs, daycares, they're just having issues with it. So I was thinking this would be a way to help the community, because there are quite a few parents that have benefited from this service. And it would only hold about 10 to 12 kids, so we're not really seeing a whole lot of traffic that will be coming through that would possibly disturb business for the other occupants in the center.
All right, thank you, Ms. West. While we've got you up here, do any commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Ms. West, now, y'all are kind of overseen by DHS, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and all the rules and regulations, y'all agree to follow them, and with the CDC, whatever they're saying today?
Yes, sir.
Y'all agree to that? Okay, and if nobody else has any comments, I'd pick a motion that we recommend this for a do-pass to the City Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed, no? All right, short and sweet, Ms. West, we appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Is that my mic? Sorry, is that my mic? I'm talking about from the audience.
Is the microphone active?
Oh, we have to... What's this button on the page? It's a new car.
Yep. All right, we will move on to item number two. Items number two through four change the mall's splash pad at 85 Lake Point Place. Item number two being the proposed conditional use permit. Mr. Grummer, staff report.
The, so this is a vacant...
This is a vacant infield lot adjacent to the tennis courts next to Lake Valencia and the public library. Area is conducive to public gathering and after-school use by children. The site is within walking distance to multifamily residential, single-family residential, and public school facilities. It's currently zoned C2, and the applicant is, it's, I'm sorry, zone is not C2, zoning is open space. And the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the purpose of locating a splash pad for the Parks and Rec Department is the applicant with the city. And I believe the applicant is, Parks and Rec is available to answer any questions concerning that. Staff recommendation, I apologize, the proposal appears acceptable with no adverse impact, and staff recommends a do-pass recommendation to the City Council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any commissioner's questions or comments, staff?
When we were...
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you for the recognition. When we met subcommittee, I guess my biggest concern was the parking and how that was going to be handled. I suggested that we have some type of cross-parking utilization agreement with Charter School. I believe that was the intent. Can you give me a status where that's at?
So that's, that's part of our site plan review, which will be next. This is the conditional, are you wanting that as part of the conditional use permit? So there's two items.
Where is that most appropriately to be commented on? At CP or at site plan review?
So as part of the...
I say that's site plan, I agree with you.
Right, site plan was where we put the parking.
On the verge of the next item then, thank you.
Further questions, staff?
I have one of the attorney. I think the parking should be involved with the conditional use. This is just my personal opinion. If you read 94-600, back down about middle ways of the paragraph, it says, "No land shall be used, occupied, or structured place, and no use shall be opted unless the..." Off-street parking required in this subdivision is provided, and it goes on. Okay, and I understand this is a startup, this is city property. I want the splash pad to go through. I just, as a guy that has worked in an area that safety, safety, safety has been drilled in my head, I would hate for something 18 months down the road happen after this is up, because we have overflow parking, and an accident occurs. Would it be appropriate if we pass this on to the City Council in the conditional use request, to add that the parking be addressed by the time that the all-in-one park is developed?
Would you like for me to look more at the conditional use review process section, or the park, so the parking section that you just brought up doesn't have, it says, as required by this section, and the schedule doesn't have a requirement for parks, so...
And I understand that.
Okay.
And I went through there and looked, and we also do not have anything in our codes that addresses on-street parking. If you go in there and type and search through our online services, and you type "on-street parking," it says zero, nothing.
Well...
But it also doesn't say anything about splash pad, and I understand that. But with that, again, if they do the park, the all-inclusive park, and they do something with parking at that time, I have no problem with voting yes on the conditional use and on the site plan. But otherwise, I think we're, we're taking a chance. That's just all I'm going to say. We're taking a chance.
So part of the conditional use review process, and one of the items to be considered is, the proposed land use is compatible with and will not adversely affect other property in the area where it is proposed to be located. So if that is your concern in regard to the parking, it's appropriate to discuss it and consider it in regard to the conditional use? I mean, it's not inappropriate to discuss it now?
Commissioner Todd, towards your concerns is, the first thing to consider is, we're making a recommendation, not vote, necessarily voting yes or no, so I think it's absolutely appropriate to pass on your concerns with whatever recommendation that we do make, for the City Council to appropriately consider that. Second being the point that Madam City Attorney just made, is the adverse effect on other properties. Without a parking agreement with the Charter School, it's probably quite likely that unofficial overflow parking may indeed occur if such an agreement is not reached, which could be considered an adverse effect on their property, which is neighboring. So those are, those are both things to consider, so Commissioner Johnson, I'll just re-raise your question to the staff. What is the status of the parking agreement?
So right now, it's a, the Charter School has reached out and communicated with Parks and Rec, and they've talked, he's provided email communication that he's willing to accept, provide shared parking on a non-binding agreement, which means verbal only. He does not want to tie the school, and he did say that he has the ability to make that non-binding agreement. But if anything is binding to the school, then he would certainly have to go to the board. So what, there's a reciprocal relationship with the parking between the Parks and Rec and the community center and the school, and there's no binding agreement to that. The city provides that additional drop-off for them, which the city can take away at any time. So they're offering the same reciprocity to the city. So from a parking standpoint, it does not meet the ordinance when it comes to commercial style developments for off-street parking requirements, but from a shared parking facility, there are sufficient number of parking spaces in close proximity that they're willing to utilize. So that's kind of the stance of the school and the city. I believe, is Philip, there's, the Parks and Rec Director may be here to speak on that behalf. Do you have any other questions concerning that?
Well, the subcommittee meeting, that's exactly what was my concern, is that they wouldn't agree to it. And they haven't. Non-binding is non-binding.
Right.
Period. So, and the position of the developer, which you didn't read into the record, was that we needed about 30 spots.
Thirty-one, correct. That's if you follow the standard bathing load for a pool-type facility.
So what's an option?
So what I'm looking at with the development, because one of the things about the city is, we have several parks that do not have parking, that the city, in conversation with the city attorney, public entities don't have to follow the same process that private entities have, because what's happening is for public purpose. So what, through discussions with the school and with Parks and Rec, our recommendation was to minimize the amount of parking in the area and to maximize the amount of public space for this half, which when you look at the map, it's only half of, half of the space that we have. Utilize that for the splash pad, have the non-binding agreement for the parking spaces, monitor it, and if there is need for additional parking, then the city can utilize the additional space to the north of the splash pad to add additional parking. Of course, being a public entity, we have the ability to do that as needed versus a private entity, once you approve it, it's set in stone. And I don't know if that's, has any bearing on it, but that's where the Parks and Rec Department is looking to go.
I'm interested in your comment about non-binding agreement. The non-binding agreement is a non, it's non-binding period, you don't have a contract in place. There is no agreement if it's non-binding.
Right.
So I don't want to...
Well, and...
...use that, because if there's, there's not an agreement in place, we don't have it. And then, I have no idea how to incorporate all what you said into the conditional use. So like I said, this was a concern of mine at subcommittee meeting, and it's not been addressed, and you know, here we are. So then, there's not, there's not any really accurate way to address it. You know, you're asking us to look past that it's a public entity, and then it doesn't meet what we do by code. You know, I don't, I don't know that I agree with that.
And I'm not asking you to look past, I'm just telling you, this is the stance that Parks and Rec...
There's really not a code requirement. I mean, when you say, I understand that we're comparing it to something that's in a similar category, but this is a park that's been in existence for a long time, and it's not an addition of space to that park, it's just an addition, an additional structure or feature within the park that's already existing.
And Commissioner Johnson, I'd probably ask you to move your mic a little closer, just to make sure that you're being heard. The other part of the evaluation in this dealt with Lake Valencia, the walking path around it, and the park spaces that are within range. Those don't have parking spaces, people park all over, and they, and then there's areas that walk. Speaking to the city engineer when he looked at this, his, what he's seen with splash pads around the country, for the most part, it's a drop-off situation where parents come and drop kids off, which was surprising to me, but either way, he said, from a parking standpoint, it's one of those things where you just kind of have to watch and see. The other side is, you're surrounded with residential areas of the school, and you'll probably have a lot of traffic from the residential areas walking in.
Further questions, the staff or the applicant?
I got, I got one more statement. If we added condition on the conditional use permit onto the City Council, that this parking issue be addressed by Phase Two, when they do the all-inclusive park, that would allow the City Council to see this, and then they can make a decision. They're the elected officials, we're just appointed.
The issue is funds. I don't think that we'd have a problem putting in parking, they don't have the funds to do it. So they're putting, they're putting more money into the amenity side of it than necessary of meeting what I feel like is an obligation. And we've required, as far as people coming before this commission before, if they didn't have a use that fit in the blue book that we go by, we created one for them. We've accommodated them in that fashion. We don't have a use for this.
But this is an OS. I mean, this is a park use. The only thing that you can put in an OS is a marina, a landing strip, a municipal building, or a park.
I understand that, John. What I'm saying is that there's not adequate enough parking down there.
No, and I agree, but if we give them time with a deadline, they may be able to...
We've had a consultant that so much told us that. Scott read that last, at the subcommittee meeting. He didn't read in the record, but we had a consultant that told us there wasn't enough parking. We did the math, and we needed 30-something. So we've been professionally consulted, said that there's not adequate, and you know, we vote for it, we look past it. It's not addressed.
Further questions or comments? Does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion that we pass this on to the City Council with a do-pass recommendation, with the condition that the parking be addressed before the park phase can begin.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
And the park phase is Phase Two. That's the all-inclusive park. It's the other park that's just lines.
Yeah, that's what I thought you meant, John, but I also thought I understood, too, there is no definite time when that, if ever, would be built.
No.
So I mean, we still have a parking issue, and I'm also one that went on, early on this stage, that I had a concern about parking. What I fear is going to happen is that when it's brand-new, you're going to have people parking in private parking spots in established business, and that's not going to be good. Over time, it'll probably, you know, wind off, but you know, it's something that needs to be addressed, and I think at this juncture, it's probably up to the City Council to make that, make that decision, as to what they're going to do. Do they want to do it without the adequate parking or not? And, you know...
The means can be addressed for the parking.
I understand that.
It's just currently, financially, it was my understanding, and with Parks and Rec, Philip, Philip had told us last time that they didn't have the money to do it, nor did they care to do it, because of the park setting and the park open space and some other things.
We previously had a motion and a second, and some discussion on the motion. Do we have further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, will you restate the motion, so that I make sure I have that correct?
Mr. Todd?
That we send this on with a do-pass recommendation, with the condition that the parking requirements are met before Phase Two or the all-inclusive park can be built.
Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry, are you going to state a particular parking requirement? Since there's not one in the code, are we going to adopt, I mean, is there the requirement from the, that the consultant mentioned when asked about it, or is there a different requirement?
The request of the planning commission that parking be done. I'm looking for an out here.
Well, the only, the only professional opinion that we've had on that came from the consultant, which, this is by memory, we did some math, and I think it was 30 spots that we needed.
So you want to put a number in there?
I'm looking, I'm looking at our director, that's what I recall from memory. I put something, I would follow the guidance that was recommended by the consultant when we asked the question.
And I would accept that as a preference.
Why do I have a second on the motion as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, one point of clarification, are you saying, John, that in your motion, that the splash pad cannot go forward until the City Council addresses the parking issue?
No, the City Council either amends the conditional use or accepts what goes to the planning commission.
Still not sure I understand what your motion is.
Well, I want to repeat what I think you said, John, just to make sure for me, is that you're making a condition that the parking be addressed in any subsequent phase, Phase Two, which is, has an indefinite timeline. There's, it's, there is no timeline for Phase Two, or if it will ever happen. So you're asking us to pass this with a condition on something that we have no time basis for.
Right, but they're the final say, and we're just giving it to them in a format, and if you don't agree with it, vote no.
I understand, John.
And it's, it's an issue that should have been addressed, it hasn't been addressed, there's an opportunity, because there is undeveloped land that could be turned into parking. The all-inclusive park could be non-existent, it could just be a parking lot next to the splash pad. But that would be a decision that was made above our pay grade. And again, this is not the best idea, but there's holes. If you go into code and you type in splash pad, and you don't get a space in between, or you do get a space in between, it takes you to Section 70, it talks about drainage and plumes. If you go through and look at parking, the, there's supposed to be two spaces per court at the tennis court. There's none. There, this, this is again, this is one of those things that, you know, had we 16 months ago, put something in there for splash pads in our regulations, when they first started talking about that, we would have that, but we haven't done it.
Well, this seems simple to me. Who had that conversation with Rob McGill, the charter, with staff? Who had the conversation?
Well, I had a, I had a conversation with him, but Philip Rayburn is the one who spoke with Charter School.
Philip, can you come forward? What was Mr. McGill's biggest concern regarding a contract, a cross-parking agreement between the city and Charter School?
He didn't, he didn't have a, he made no comments about his concerns, he just didn't want to be in a binding contract, from what I go.
So if we put a, if the city attorney would draft, I didn't speak with him, so I'm going to ask you. So if the city attorney would draft language and present it, he would not support that and present it to his board of directors or his...
I wouldn't know that until we put something in front of him. But I do know, well, I won't say it here, we do a lot for the Charter School.
Absolutely, and it's disappointing, I'll be honest with you.
They use my baseball field, softball field, soccer field, they use my gym, community center, so...
Yeah, and I, in my opinion, as far as the motion is, is that I, I'm, I would like for the, we're going, we're going, we need to vote on this, it's on the table, Mr. Chair. If this goes down, it comes down, does it not? The CP will not move forward. So I guess from a point of order, do I need to amend, Johns?
Well, we already got one amendment on it.
We can, we can clean up the motion at any point we need to, but our recommendation is not binding on the City Council, so we either give a do-pass or do-not-pass recommendation, or other recommendations, the City Council is free to take our advice or not.
Yes, so my, my position on this is that the conditional use, I would give a do-pass recommendation if we have a binding agreement, a cross-parking agreement with Charter School. And I would, I'd like the city attorney to draft up the language, provide it to whomever, to send it to Rob McGill, and he'd take it before his board. And I'm happy to show up at that meeting and discuss the positives and negatives regarding that opportunity.
I've read the emails that I guess have been exchanged with Mr. McGill, so I, so, Philip, we don't have, we allow them to use like our back parking lot at the community center, is that correct, to, for drop-off, pickup, and that kind of thing?
Correct.
But we have no written agreement for that, do we?
Correct.
Right, and I think he, he's just, you know, we have a lot of reciprocal arrangements with the Charter School, but I, I don't think he feels comfortable...
Perhaps it's time to put those in some type of contractual means.
I would not want to bind, I don't think we can bind the city for that purpose, to use public property for that private purpose. So I would not want to do that. And I think, I understand his point of view, that that's not something the city has extended as an option, you know, that we're going to give them a... you know, that we're going to give them a private right to our property, our public property. Um, and I understand him having the same, the same viewpoint.
Cross-parking utilization agreements are done all the time.
Commissioner Johnson, I think the issue is effectively conveying some sort of a property right of a public entity to a, well, Charter School is kind of in a weird position being a public charter school, but it is a quasi-private entity, so there are some legality issues with that.
But I know the splash pad, I know y'all keep considering it, or looking at, from the pool's perspective. It's closer to a playground, so I don't know if there's recommended parking for a playground. But this, this splash pad is not any bigger than this room. It's only about half the size of this room.
Yeah, Philip, I agree with that, but when I asked about it at the subcommittee, the only response I got from Mr. Drummer was that, well, we've had a consultant give us, and they provided that it required thirty spaces. And then that's why I asked, is there other options? So you, you, he said that I didn't hear any.
I, I think we're relying on an opinion that a consultant gave, probably fairly offhand. Like, I mean, if we wanna have a, a, a more study done on that, that might be appropriate. But I don't, I mean, did he give, did he do like a mathematical analysis for you based on splash pads or playgrounds? I mean, I, I don't-
He did. He did an analysis based on, based on pools and bathing loads and destination-style pools. He did, uh, there's, splash pads do not fall in, inside the same category. So, uh, you're asking for a literal interpretation of the ordinance providing a specific number of parking spaces, and we don't have that, and we can't give that. So one, so one of the parts of the analysis is trying to determine how's the splash pad gonna be utilized and considered. And that's how we have to figure that. We don't know. We've never had one in the city. So my recommendation was rather than a literal physical interpretation of putting parking spaces, which in my opinion, thirty-one spaces for the size of the pad is, is way excessive. That's why the shared parking makes sense, since the actual pad itself really lends itself as an extension of Lake Valencia and the other parks and areas where people are using, uh, to get access to all around.
We have no shared parking agreement. We have none. There is no, there is no shared parking agreement.
Right.
Doesn't exist.
But it happens at this building?
You can call to question as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we have an amendment on the motion.
How about we start the motion over?
So, I'm sorry, was there, there was a motion and a second to?
And then there was an amendment and a vote. I don't know about the vote on the second.
What was the, what, so was, did he formally make a motion to amend to say that there had to be a binding agreement with the Charter School?
I made no such motion. I made no such motion.
Okay, I'm just making sure I know where we are.
What was the amendment?
And you, you, I was just advised by staff that it's some quasi-government thing, and neither one of us could do it, so.
Well, there was no second to your amendment, to your motion.
We need to report on, on Johns.
So was there amendment to yours?
If there was no second, there was no amendment.
Okay, so we're just still going by what you made the motion for?
Right.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Does, does no?
No. All right. There's two yeses.
I have a vote of four noes, two yeses. If my procedure is correct, we do need to issue a recommendation to the city council, and as that motion failed, um, unless Madam City Attorney, uh, corrects me, we will need another motion.
I believe that's correct.
I don't understand that one either. If we didn't, if, if we didn't ma- make a motion to pass it on, then it's-
We did, we, we, we voted down a motion for a particular do-pass recommendation. Therefore, the decision is not to issue that recommendation. That doesn't automatically make it a do-not-pass recommendation or a different recommendation. So we will need a motion for a, an alternative recommendation.
Can I read, I have that code section up. I'm gonna give you, give them the options in the code. Okay, it, from ninety-four dash ninety-seven on a conditional use, the planning commission, uh, shall make one, then make one of the following recommendations to the city council. One, approve the conditional uses submitted. Two, approve the conditional use with modifications. Or three, defer the conditional use or deny the conditional use.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny the conditional use.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just make sure if we were voting in affirmative, it will be do-not-pass, correct?
A do-not, a, a recommendation that the city council deny the conditional use.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes, sir.
Does pose no?
No.
No. Uh, voted four to two. Uh, the recommendation will be for the city council to deny. Uh, moving on to item number three, the proposed site plan.
I think we can hear it.
And I, I will defer, Commissioner Johnson, I have your concerns as well. I will defer to Madam City Attorney. Uh, it's my understanding, though, since we did not take a definitive action one way or another, simply issue a recommendation on the conditional use, I think we still can hear it. Whether or not it would be prudent to hear it may be another, uh, may be another matter. Madam City Attorney, any thoughts on that?
I believe it's a different consideration. Uh, so I, I would, let's see, I'll find the section.
If, if we heard it and voted one way or the other with the condition that the city council approved the conditional use, that may give us the opportunity to see this and hear it. But if they don't approve the conditional use, or they send it back to the planning commission, or they table it, we've still heard it, 'cause site plans don't move on to the city council.
Correct, that is correct. So site-
But if the, if the, if the use is not approved, uh, here, I, I don't see how you can move forward with a site plan approval on a location that's not approved for use.
There's, there's a, there's a time bar issue if we vote down the site plan, correct? They can only come back with special approval within something else, correct?
I would, I would probably defer, or, or hear from Parks and Rec what they would want to do with that. But rather than vote it down, uh, my recommendation would be to defer it.
Do we have any such request from the applicant?
Yeah, I, I see no reason to keep going forward until we can get the parking corrected and resubmit.
Madam City Attorney, as a matter of procedure, would this be best for the applicant to withdraw items three and four, or for the commission to vote to table them?
Uh, I, I believe it would probably be more, be more expedient to just table it and, uh, look at it again if, after you get the city council's decision.
If we table, we can bring it up at any time. The applicant wouldn't have to reapply, correct about that? Not that we charge any money anyway, but at any point in time, we can bring it back up. We, the leader did bring it back on the agenda anytime we desire.
That's correct.
So I, are you volunteering, are you gonna pull it down, Philip? Or do you want us to vote?
I might as well vote.
You vote, you have to reapply. If you voluntarily, I think the better thing is for us to vote and, and, and table it.
Okay.
Most expedient for you.
I'm fine with that.
Am I, have support on it? Yeah, I think that's the best course forward.
Uh, I would agree, I would agree. You, no, no resubmission, um, I mean, you can come to the subcommittee again, but we've already seen the nuts and bolts of this, and it'll just be, uh, fewer moving parts if you allow us to table it and just pull it up when we deem appropriate.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we table items, uh, three and four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does pose no? All right, items three and four are tabled. We'll move on to item number five, the proposed final plat will be Lily Oaks addition in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Uh, Mr. Drummer, staff report?
So, this is an application from Holloway Engineering for a property that is located in our extraterri- extraterritorial jurisdiction, um, off short Marche Road. Uh, the location, uh, close to the new White Oak interchange. After staff review, county has made their comments, and the county's comments have been satisfied. Um, and staff recommends approval contingent upon satisfying any additional commissioner requirements. The main, uh, thing that we added to the plat was, uh, the, um, thirty, thirty-foot of right-of-way dedication to meet the collector standards for, uh, Marche Road, short Marche Road.
All right, have any commissioner questions or comments, staff? Any questions or comments of the applicant?
Now, does this move on to city council?
No, this is a, uh, this is here. It stays here.
Motion to, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed final, final plat for the Lily Oaks addition, pending any other commissioner or staff comments.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those, oh, sorry, any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does oppose no? All right, motion is approved. Moving on to item number six, uh, uh, temporarily close the planning commission and convene the board of zoning adjustment for item number six, uh, related to two sixteen Country Club Parkway. Uh, Mr. Drummer, staff report?
Um, so this, uh, this was a request. Uh, there was an applicant who, um, was, um, a plot sheet, I'm sorry, they installed a, uh, fence located at two sixteen Country Club on the backside of an alley. Um, and it was found, uh, they, uh, put it in at eight feet. Uh, the ordinance requires six feet. Um, so they came back, provided a permit application to the, uh, to the permits department, which was denied, and it was brought back to, uh, the applicant asked to come to you, requesting a, um, uh, variance to allow the fence to stay at eight feet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Drummer. Do we have any questions or comments, staff? Do we have any questions or comments to the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, if she's here, I think we need to give her a chance to speak.
The applicant or applicants represented present? And please state your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Cole. Address is two sixteen Country Club Parkway. It's just a small section that's in violation. Um, our neighbors across the alleyway, there, we sent video in, um, just how intense the lights are, um, that illuminates our home at nighttime. And it's, um, it's extremely light. There are floodlight, there are floodlights that illuminate the, um, the whole backside of our home. But we only, the part that's in violation is only the part that's, um, in our, that, um, blocks our living room. Um, it interferes with, um, the kids watching TV. Do you have pictures of that, sir?
Oh, um, sorry, I don't have the pictures, uh, loaded up here. My apologies.
It's just a small section that's in violation, and I, I do apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole, I do have the pictures. It looks like we're pulling them out in front of me, and, uh, I will say, I, uh, I should commend you for actually taking some work to kind of taper those down to meet with the other fence, rather than just have a, a very abrupt transition.
Yes, sir, they're, they're tapered down.
All affirmative pictures. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
We asked at the subcommittee meeting, uh, Mr. Cole, if, uh, the, um, your contractor was aware of the permitting process with City Maumell?
No, sir, uh, um, we never did address that issue.
Thank you.
Uh, there were other, there were other, uh, homes in the, in the alleyway that's, um, that's over the six-feet violation, and it's been that way for years. So, um, it's, we, we never did discuss that part of it. And like I said, that's the only part that's in violation, is the part in this, it tapers down. And, um, do you have the video of the, the lights from the neighbor?
Uh, no, sir, I do not.
Are you saying there's other residents with a, an excess of six-foot, uh, fence?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Perhaps code enforcement needs to be aware of that.
It could be before we change the ordinance just.
Perhaps.
Previously, there was no hot-hem inspection. I don't remember how long ago, but it's been ten years.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
Uh, Mr. Cole, have you been contacted one way or the other by the, uh, Country Club POA regarding this fence?
No, sir.
Do we have any other questions or comments of the, for the applicant? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to grant the variance.
Need to.
Mr. Chairman, I turned the mic on, and now I have a motion to grant the variance.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes? Does pose no?
No.
I have a vote of two in favor, four opposed. Uh, the motion is denied.
Good.
Thanks for coming forth, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Uh, staying in the board of zoning adjustment, we will move to item number seven. Uh, the Maumell Valley Estates addition proposal for variance for street grade. Mr. Drummer, uh, staff report?
All righty. You're with me? This, uh, this property is located, um, so the applicant is Maumell Valley Estates. White Data is applying for, um, a developer that is proposing Maumell Valley Estates Phase nineteen. The location of that is, uh, on the east side of, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, the south side of city off of, um, uh, Odom Boulevard. It's on the southern part of Maumell Valley Estates. And one of the last, one of the last phases that'll be going in. And I'm sorry, I apologize. I've got a technology issue. All right. Uh, the applicant provided preliminary plat for revision with, uh, Maumell Valley Drive section. So phase nineteen, uh, is, uh, the, the grades that they have for this section exceed the level that's allowed by, according to the applicant, allowed by, uh, code, which it's designated on the master street plan as a collector. Collector streets are, uh, allowed to go to twelve percent grade. And, uh, the, um, the connection would be connecting Maumell Valley Estates to Osage Falls. The fire department and the police department supports the connection between the two subdivisions as it provides, uh, greater emergency personnel, um, access. as it provides greater emergency personnel access between the two subdivisions. Public Works comments or challenges with heavy equipment on the road as well as stormwater designs on the steeper slopes and the increased grade, but they do support the connection as well. City, the city engineer, again, supports connection but has concerns with any street grades exceeding the limits set by the ordinance. So according to Section seventy dash one thirty-two B six, subject to planning commission approval, street grades may be increased above the maximum grade stated in this section by not more than two percent and not to exceed two hundred feet in any contiguous segment above what is allowed. The collector maximum, again, is a grade of twelve percent. So the request of variance above the twelve percent, which by ordinance, you're only allowed to approve up to two percent, which would be fourteen. Residential street grade maximums are fifteen percent for that. So based on the location and anticipated function and potential grade issues, in order to successfully and safely connect the section of the street, the street engineer and staff, after discussion, support the increased grade by two percent for the collector. And then if need be, based on the location of this neighborhood and how it connects to both subdivisions, would also support a, an amendment to the master street plan to downgrade at a later time, not during this meeting, but from a collector to a residential in order to mitigate traffic concerns when it comes to safety, making the road narrower, slower, and less likely to be used as cut-through traffic between the neighborhoods. So staff recommendation is, staff recommends approval of the variance to Section seventy dash one thirty-two B six to allow an increase above the maximum allowed street grade by not more than two percent increase above the maximum allowed grade for the type of street proposed at this section. Contingent upon submission of a revised preliminary plat for Maumell Valley Estates for staff review showing all current and proposed changes to date, along with street and drainage plans for engineering review and approval and verification that the street design meets all other provisions in Section seventy dash one thirty-two of the subdivision ordinance. And then also concrete construction in lieu of asphalt as determined by city staff during design review for excessive grades requiring additional reinforcement. And although I did mention for staff review, if planning commission recommendation is to bring this back and be reviewed by planning commission, that's certainly an option there, but it's our recommendation.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Todd?
Do you have any public comments?
We do have a number of them. Do we have our timer here?
I can.
All right. Mr. Drummer, we're keeping time. These cards got a bit jumbled, so it may not be first come, first served. And I apologize if I can't read your writing. You would be very hard pressed to read mine. I have Mr. Robert Kibbs. Name and, name and address, and then you may proceed.
Sure, thank you. My name's Robert Kibby. And address is one ninety-four Maumell Valley Drive. So our house is just a few homes up from the current dead end on that piece of it. And, and so just wanted to start, just to share with you, A, number one, you know, our family's opposition to making this a through street, and I understand, thank you for sharing that information tonight. Sounds like it's part of the valley and the things that have already been approved on it on that end. Obviously, we enjoy being a dead-end road because it cuts down on traffic, and anything that makes it a connector through is obviously going to increase the traffic on it and, you know, make the safety aspect of it tougher for us, and then traffic tends to get fast from that area, and that was part of what we enjoyed about having that when we bought that house there last year. There are a number of kids that are right there next to us, so within probably a thousand yards of the current dead end, which are also near the crest of that. You'll probably hear from a couple of others on that issue as well tonight. So I'd just say to you, if it's, you know, I understand, I believe, I understand that that's not the issue of making this through street or not is not actually your technical issue before you tonight. All I would ask is if that's not, that you just, that the city make every effort to make sure that we make it as inhibitive as possible for people to speed through that area on it, because the Osage Valley Falls, the Osage Falls side of the neighborhood, which is obviously how we get in and out of there right now, you know, the closer it is to the main road, the faster the traffic tends to go, and so that's our concern with any extension or connector that's going to go through there on it from that standpoint. And that's all I've got to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Mr. John Jones. Name and address for the record, then you may proceed.
My name's John Jones. I live at two oh five Maumell Valley. I have some of the same concerns as, as Rob. I've, I've lived there three years, and we have an excellent neighborhood quality of living on top of the hill. We, we have continuous wind. It, it's a very neighborhood feeling that, that reminds me when, you know, I was younger, and, you know, people are constantly walking. We have walkers that come up from other subdivisions, and, you know, they'll park and they'll do their laps because of the scenic view, and we see the river and Pinnacle Mountain. It's, it's absolutely gorgeous. So we have a treasure there, and this, when I say, you know, a neighborhood quality of living, it's, you know, there's some, some issues that I've seen already that there's been either exceptions made to some development that have created safety hazards. And I, I think I, I called Scott a couple of days ago and, and kind of expressed my, view on those items, but where Rob lives, as you come up the top of the hill, you don't have sixty feet before you can see a crosswalk. And, and the slope is significant that a two-year-old to walk across, there's no stop sign. I live on the corner, and, and the other safety issue there is, there's a crosswalk on the downhill slope, so the people turning right off of Maumell Valley onto Manitou can't see animals, they can't see the small kids. They're too busy looking because their radius isn't, you know, far enough away, the, the radius is so tight that, that they have to pull out into the road, and their primary focus is looking at the traffic coming on Manitou in front of them. So they're not focused on what's crossing the road down below them, and if you're in a, in a regular car, you can't see that because the hood impedes the view. So, you know, I, I just have some concerns that things get overlooked, and here we're, it says that you're going to connect two subdivisions, so there's more than two subdivisions. I don't understand that, you know, and we've got people that are having trouble pulling out of their, their driveways because the amount of traffic that's currently there because of the expansion of that subdivision that's on the backside. I can't think of what it's called, but down on Sagamore and, and I guess it would be to the west of, of Maumell Valley, the proposed Maumell Valley. But that, that's my concerns. I, you know, we, we pay a significant amount of taxes to enjoy that quality of living.
Mr. Jones, we do have a time limit, so if you could, I'll give you a little bit of leeway to kind of conclude.
Okay. So that being said, you know, before any type of further development, I would like to see some safety measures put in place. I think we need to review the speed. We need to maybe put some safety devices on Manitou to slow down traffic. I'm not for the connection.
Mr. Jones, I apologize, but we need, do need to keep this meeting going.
Okay. So, so, you know, I, I, if, if there's any way to not make that a through or make it so that you can, you can have emergency vehicles.
Mr. Jones, I hate to cut you off, but we do need to keep this meeting going, and we do have a time limit on public comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for point of order and record, the street is not built yet, but it's been designed since two thousand or on a plot since two thousand. It was drawn on paper at that time. So this is just.
That didn't change the safety.
Sir, let me finish.
That didn't change the safety.
Let me finish.
Okay.
This is just the grade of the street. After this variance, this preliminary plat will come before the planning commission, before the bank can start to be built, and then it will be approved or not approved by the city council. So there's other options to voice your safety concerns at that time. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Todd. Now I have Mr. Ellis Whitlow. Please state your name and address for the record, then you may proceed.
Okay, my name is Ellis Whitlow. I'm at one oh four Manitou Drive. My big concern is the additional traffic in front of my house. When I come out of my driveway, I am facing Osage Drive, and I have to come across Manitou. So I've got the Manitou traffic coming down the hill. I've got the Manitou traffic coming off of Odom, and I've also got the Osage traffic that's coming up to try to get on Manitou. With this additional traffic, I don't know how much it is, two or three hundred cars a day, maybe, it's going to really make my life tough getting across and getting out of Manitou. The second concern I've got, I would think the majority of the people coming down Manitou are going to be turning right onto Odom. That crosswalk is on the right side of Manitou. There's not a whole lot of places for people to stand to walk across. I think that needs to be considered to be put on the left side. And my third concern is I've walked this whole area once I found out about, I've only been here two years, is Sagamore and Maumell Valley Drive. That is to me a blind spot, just coming up the hill. You can't see Sagamore until you're there. So are they going to put a stop sign there? Those are my three concerns, and it's safety, safety, safety.
Thank you, Ms. Whitlow.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I'd like to reinforce what John said. If, I'm, I'm all for public comment, but I'd like to stay on topic. The topic before us is the, is the grade of the road. So, and I'm more than happy to hear arguments one way or the other regarding the technical challenges that may or may not bring before this commission. The issues of safety will have to be taken up at the time the preliminary plat's passed through.
Commissioner Johnson, point taken. I do agree to anyone else here, we are dealing with just the grade of this road in particular, not necessarily allowing it or disallowing it at this point, but Commissioner Johnson, to your point, and Commissioner Todd as well, as these are relevant to some degree, we do need to let the public comments occur. Last public comment we have is somebody who could not be here but asked a written statement to be read into the record. Mr. Drummer, could you do that, please?
So the, the comment came from a Mr. Jeff Van Patton at one thirty-one Manitou Drive, and I'll summarize his comments by stating he's, I want, he wants to provide comments for the commission considering the meeting, let's see. How will this new connecting road increase the drainage issues in the Osage neighborhood? With this waiver request, what is being done to mitigate the potential increase in drainage issues on Manitou? There are some blind spots on Manitou and the Sagamore Court. Post-connecting road will have a very deep grade. What mitigating actions are being done to correct potential blind spots? Osage neighborhood and Maumell Valley have very different housing density on the housing lots. What is the developer and the city of Maumell Planning Commission doing to handle the transitioning from lower-density lots? And that's the extent of his comments.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, or thank you, Mr. Drummer. As we are finished with public comments, we'll move on to commissioner comments and questions to staff or the applicant. Mr. Dale, I believe you may be needed here shortly.
If you come forward, Mr. Dale. Hi, Brian.
Good evening. Brian Dale, White Data and Associates, twenty-four Rawling Circle, Little Rock, representing the applicant, Maumell Valley LLC.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Welcome.
I've got a question on the plat or the profile. So we're stopping here at, at the phase line. So this grade, eight eleven, seven four, eight five, is it, is that, that's really what's constructed?
That is what our survey crew shot in the field, and.
So there's no vertical curves?
It, I couldn't get a copy of the, the plan to, to try mimicking what was there, so these are just the shots that our survey crew shot in the field. I mean, there, there probably is a vertical curve, but I'd love to get a copy of the plan if possible.
So is, is, do you think you can tie to that at the location of the phase?
Yes, and we're, we're actually working with the, the city engineer and staff to try coming up with a better alignment that'll help with the grades. And so we're, we're working on this, trying to come up with a better profile that'll help the city, help the neighborhood, help the engineer, as well as help the developer. I mean.
So I think we'd be careful in the variance request. Is that, is variance not going to exceed sixteen?
It will.
You send the, it will or will not?
It will.
Well, that's what you, that's the maximum grade that you have shown.
We are working with staff to consider taking this piece to a residential street, which would be fifteen plus two. We could get to the seventeen for a very short distance for the two hundred foot. Whereas right now, I think we're way over two hundred foot. It's sixteen.
We discussed that at the subcommittee. Does that change, that change the master street plan?
Yes, we would have to make an application, which we have not done and is not part of this meeting. It would have to be a separate application if we continue to pursue that.
So what you have before us is you're requesting a variance not to exceed sixteen percent, but you just said it's going to.
I think we've asked for the allowable grade plus two percent.
Well, in that section of the road, that's just going to be fourteen.
Correct, correct. So planning commission can only, according, by ordinance, can only approve no more than two percent above the maximum, which is twelve. So for a collector, all that you can approve is fourteen percent. They were requesting sixteen percent, but as we, as we got into it and discussed it, there's, there's no way to, to make that with the collector unless they can redesign the road and get it down to a fourteen percent grade and meet the, the standards of the ordinance.
I discussed that with Joe.
That's, I mean, right now, we've got a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty vertical feet that we're trying to cover over eleven hundred feet, and that's about a fourteen and a half percent if we just go from end to end all the way through. That's, that's, I mean, if we just.
What's before us on the, on the, on the variance is just to give you two.
That's right.
But what you're showing sixteen. I make sure we're on the same page.
Commissioner, if, I think I can bridge where we're going for. I think, and Mr. Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, is what you're seeking. They're seeking for a maximum of plus two allowed what it is. Therefore, if the master street, street plan is not amended and the street is not reclassified, all we have approved is fourteen percent, yet this is just kind of a, it may be putting the cart before the horse, but if they do get the street changed to a residential, then they would be allowed sixteen percent based on what we're doing today, or sorry, seventeen percent based on what we're doing today.
Yep, that's right.
So what my, my point was, is that you're already showing something that we give you the variance for you can't do.
That's right, because, because we, because we can't build it today.
That's why I couldn't, that's why when I came today, I was like, whoa, this is, we can't, I mean, this doesn't, you're going to have to redesign.
Yeah, the math didn't work. I mean, we, we can't build it today, and we can't build it without variance.
And do, do the master street plan adjustment like we, or I discussed that with Joe. That was a sidebar conversation.
But I think that's where we're headed, though. I mean, we're, we're still working on it, and we're still fine tuning it.
Do you want to go ahead with the variance? You know, on that tonight?
Yes, I would like to get the variance of plus two for two hundred foot above whatever the street classification is.
So, and that's, again, it's not two percent on the current classification. It's two percent on, on any classification in this section of roadway.
I can, I kind of understand the strategy. Okay. So you're going to continue to go back and work that in that anticipation and have to have another submitted force on the, on the change?
That's correct, probably next month.
If you get it to work.
Yeah, if we can get it to work.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That clears my confusion.
Mr. Dale, I can't imagine this to be much of an issue, but do you and your client have any issue with us potentially conditioning a due pass recommendation with the express condition that this variance be noted on any future submissions before this body or the city council regarding the reclassification of that street? Just, just to make sure that it's noted that, hey, we, we've got an extra two percent in our pocket if you change this.
So this doesn't go to city council, but the master street plan amendment would go to city council, is that correct?
In the final.
Yes, correct.
Correct.
In the final what?
In the final of the settlement plan.
So, no, actually, um, the, the preliminary, this is a, um, this is in a...
It's R one, I think, for preliminary plat.
It's R one. It's not, it's not, uh, right.
It would all, it would, it would all, well, they, if, if I understand this, Brian, the way that your, your client wants to take this through, if, if you can't get this into plus two, um, then you're gonna have to come back and amend the master street plan because you're asking for a plus two, and right now, it's a collector to have to go residential. And we discussed that.
Right.
So, if you can't get it in a fourteen, which it looks like that's not gonna be possible...
That's correct.
That's my point, is that you're gonna be back before us.
We're gonna be back next month, more than likely.
But you have the variance in your pocket, and you know that you can...
I can get my plus two for two hundred.
I, I get it. Okay.
But this would not go to city council, most likely.
Master street plan amendment will go to city council, won't it?
The master street plan would, yes.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
But not this variance or a revision to the preliminary plat, I think is what Commissioner Todd was talking about.
Yeah, Brian, my, my concern is, and I, I can't imagine this being an issue, but you and your client just, uh, I would like to see this conditioned on if we approve it, that any submissions you have to amend the master street plan explicitly note, uh, a granted variance for an extra two percent, just so it doesn't slip through the cracks and everybody is fully informed.
Yes, we can, we agree to that.
Good.
Have any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
To make a motion to approve the variance for the street grade at Marmel Valley Estates, Phase nineteen, pending any other, uh, comments or questions by Commissioner.
I say...
I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no?
No.
A vote of five to one, the variance is graded.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Dale.
Have a good evening.
All right, I will now close before the zoning adjustment, reconvene the planning commission. We'll move on to items like eight through twelve regarding the splash car wash in the Marmel Town Center addition. Uh, item number eight being the proposed final plat. Mr. Grummer, staff, have a comment?
So, this is a, a replat request for, uh, the Marmel Town Center, uh, Track C location, which, which is currently, uh, the previous Walmart Neighborhood Market. Uh, the applicants have requested a lot split to provide an out parcel for development on that lot. Um, uh, the checklist, uh, there are some items that have to be, uh, updated on the final plat, uh, with true courses, lot lines. Uh, the lot line dimension was found to be somewhat off, at least it appeared to be, so I asked them to re-verify that. Um, and then accurate locations. Uh, service easements, um... So, items five, twelve, thirteen, seventeen, twenty-one K, and twenty-three, and twenty-six, and twenty-seven, uh, require amendments on the final plat. Um, otherwise, uh, staff recommends approval of the final plat, contingent upon meeting all staff, engineering, and planning commission comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions or comments to staff?
The first item we're voting on, is, is the lot split?
Yes, sir.
Anything further, staff? Any questions or comments to the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have one of the applicant.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Bradford Gaines. I'm with Colliers International, uh, number one, Ally Drive, Little Rock.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Staff?
Yes, sir. Uh, you've got a checklist, and you agreed to comply with the non-compliant items.
That's correct, yes. And my engineer, Philip Lewis, is here tonight. He's, he's talked with Scott as well, and we'll adhere to those.
Anything further for the applicant? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed final plan for Marmel Town Center addition, Bradford Gaines applicant, pending any other Commissioner staff comments?
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no? All right. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, the proposed site plan for the same project. Mr. Grummer, staff report.
All right. Uh, we have, um, the, this is the site that you just previously approved on the lot split of the Marmel Town Center. Uh, the applicant is proposing an indoor car wash, uh, to be utilized. So, uh, the building, uh, footprint stays the same. Uh, they're changing the dynamics of the parking lot area in order to accommodate ingress and egress of traffic. Uh, the existing zoning for this location is C two, and the use is allowed by right. Um, as far as comments on the site plan, the, uh, the applicant has, uh, satisfied all comments, uh, all staff comments with the exception of, um, two things. Item number twenty-three, the proposed site plan does not interfere with unnecessary, with easement roadways, utilities, and other public-private rights of way. Uh, that's dealing with just, uh, area that was previously discussed within the, uh, subcommittee. Uh, they do have a little bit of drive that goes over the, um, uh, the actual, uh, right of way, but in discussion with the city engineer and determining that, um, uh, in past situations, uh, the, uh, they don't see that because it's a drive, and it's easily, um, torn up that it, uh, is not considered, um, uh, that they, they've allowed that in the past. But I just wanted to make mention of that, that it does creep over, um, into the right of way. Um, and then, uh, proposed pedestrian vehicular circulation systems, um, and they've, uh, in, in discussion, uh, we've discussed a, uh, pathway, since this is a mid-block crossing, there's no, uh, pedestrian pathways to get across the site to the strip mall from Audubon, and they've agreed to add, uh, some sidewalk, uh, accessibility in order to cross in front of the building, um, to be able, for pedestrians to be able to access, because there's no other, uh, good access around the site. Staff recommends approval, contingent upon meeting all staff and Commissioner comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions or comments for staff?
Yes, yes, um, Mr. Chairman. I, I can't tell from the site plan application, does this, uh, does the concrete drive a butt, uh, Audubon, or is it separate?
No, it does not. There's a, there's still grass, um, uh, there's a grass median in between, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes, there's still a pretty good amount of green space there.
Yes, and I, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay. Well, and part of that is, and I...
You gotta come to the podium, though.
Oh, my bad. I'm just for the podium. I'm sorry.
Been a long wait, but for y'all, too. No, and a part of that is, our gray scaling doesn't show up real well underneath. We, we're in the process of correcting that. So, it shows the street underlayment, to your point, Craig. It didn't show the edge of the street right away. But there, it is a pretty wide green path there to begin with with landscaping, so there's still gonna be a pretty significant... I don't have the exact distance, but it's still a pretty good green space there between the edge of Audubon, so... I should've made that clear on that drawing.
Yeah, you, you can clean that up. Is, uh, who, whose responsibility is, is it, since the improvements are gonna be struck, constructed on right of way, owned by the city, whose responsibility is it to, to maintain that? So, he's constructing improvements on us, so if, if there's damage to that, or whatever the case may be, that's his or ours to maintain. Madam City Attorney?
Um, it's a, and we're referring to the driveway improvement? Um, the, it's still their property. It's just a right of way that the city owns. Or I mean, the city owns the right of way, not the property, so...
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. That's not my question. So, they're, they're constructing six-foot of improvements on city-owned property.
The right of way is not city-owned property. We own the right of way. It's a right, it's a property interest. It doesn't mean the city owns the property.
The property line goes right through the middle.
Are you talking about just on the, on the survey, or on this...
Scott has the hand right there, Brian. So, there is a strip of improvements that is west, southwest. So, they are constructing improvements on city right of way. And if we own it, you say we don't own it, um...
We own the right of way, so it's an easement right that the city owns. It's still their property, so if it's a driveway and it needs to be maintained in keeping with the code, it would be their responsibility to maintain their driveway.
The property line shows going right through the middle of...
So, um, Philip, is, is the solid, correct me if, if I'm wrong, up on there, the, the solid line, is that the right of way line, or is the dash line the right of way line, please?
The dash line is the, it's supposed to be the right of way line. The, the discrepancy with the property line, that's part of what you flagged on the plat. We're gonna get it worked out.
Right.
Two, our survey went out, identified different property lines than what had been done by Brooks surveying initially on the property. So, we're, that will be resolved on the plat. But it's, I understand it'll move out. We want to show worst case, to your point, Craig, that we're, the idea is to end up in the right way. I'm, I'm not determining who owns that or not, but...
Right. So...
Ultimately, not over the property line, to your point.
So, so again...
The client will not own, I wanna make sure this is understood. See, the client's not gonna own that section of concrete driveway that's outside of his property boundary.
Correct.
Our agreement?
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah.
I think our City Attorney may have a different point, I'm not for sure, but we would not own that.
I think it's similar. I was mentioning in the, at the subdivision subcommittee, or I think that's what you guys call it, like in Little Rock where you're in the right of way, you, there's a franchise tax or agreement you pay for, to be in it.
Right.
So, and then I think pretty much the owner of that maintains it.
Right.
I mean, it's on the splash car wash to maintain that. That will be understood.
We're, we're, we're gonna hold you accountable that and make you put a plat note on there. You comfortable with that?
That's fine, yeah. And my, and my client, he's, and my client's making a significant investment, five million plus dollars. He's gonna take care of the driveway.
I don't want the city to have to pay for anything.
Correct.
Right, understood.
You know, he, he's applicant, he's owner today, but I, I can...
Right.
A lot of car washes in town, that the person that came before is not the owner.
Right, right.
Some of those. Understand the nature of the business. So, I wanna add, if you're okay with that, I wanna add a plat note, that that, that section of improvements that's provided by your client...
Okay.
Is, is to be, uh, maintained...
Okay.
Appropriately. I, I don't know. I'll let you and the planning director work out the language on that.
That's fine, yeah. No problem.
Thank you.
So, and, and that's one of the things I need a clarification on, on the plat, was the lot lines, because when you look at this, it looks like that the right of way, the dash line, you're only impacting just a very small corner of this. But according to this, so it needs to be clarified on the...
Correct. We're, we're in the middle of that, so that's, but if you not talk about it, we'll get that worked out.
Right. And, right, and then, uh, and speaking with Mazan, with our city engineer, he said, uh, that it's typically not an issue, because these are easily, the, the test is...
I'm not saying it's an issue of having the improvements on our, our right of way, but I, my, my position is that I don't want the city to have to maintain it.
Yes, sir.
Further questions or comments to the applicant? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed site plan for splash Marmel car wash, for Bradford Gaines being the applicant. Bring in any other further comments from Commissioners or staff.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no? All right. Motion carries. Moving on to item number ten, the proposed elevation plan. Uh, Mr. Grummer, staff report.
All righty. Um, so, the, um, the applicant had, uh, they had applied for a variance for an alternative material to be used that was not, um, part of the ordinance, which was a, a metal siding. That's what the variance original, uh, application was for. Um, and since then, they have removed, uh, those materials and replaced them with materials that are found in the ordinance that are of high quality. Um, so, uh, we've removed the variance from the agenda and, uh, and as well, uh, the relation that it is with the remaining facility because of the brick and, um, the design that they've come in. So, staff recommendation is, again, approval, contingent upon, um, Commissioner comments.
Do we have any questions or comments for staff?
We just appreciate your client incorporating our comments.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
'Cause I know it's a cost, I know it's getting in his pocketbook a little bit, pocketbook a little bit.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments to the applicant? Do I have a motion?
To make a motion that we approve the proposed elevation plan for splash Marmel car wash, Bradford Gaines applicant.
Subject, staff and Commissioner comment.
Sure.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no? All right. Motion carries. Moving on to item number eleven, the proposed drainage plan. Mr. Grummer, staff report.
So, um, there is not a drainage plan after, uh, so I apologize for that on the agenda. Uh, speaking with, uh, the city engineer and researching our files, which this, uh, Track C was originally approved in nineteen ninety-nine with regional detention. Um, so regional, uh, regional drainage facilities is approved by ETC in nineteen ninety-nine with original development designed to handle fifty-year event. Uh, consultation with ETC determined that the proposed development would not add any additional stormwater detention needs due to the regional facility designed for Track C. No, sir. Just stated for reference.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Moving on to item number twelve, the proposed landscape and irrigation plan. Staff report, please.
Okay, um, pull that up. The, um, uh, of course, the client, uh, used a professional landscape firm, and they, um, uh, they stuck to the, uh, they got into the ordinance and complied, complied very nicely. So, you'll find on the landscape plan that they added, um, the irrigation. Um, so you have both your irrigation and landscape detailed. Uh, they have the appropriate spacing between the bushes and the trees. Um, so they've, uh, they've, uh, they've covered their bases. They're using the existing landscape that is on Audubon Drive, which is the screening landscape, um, and then adding additional within the islands that they've created internally. So, staff recommends, um, approval as submitted, a contingent upon any additional Commissioner comments.
All right. Any questions or comments for staff?
I got a question on Audubon, where you're putting in the concrete. It's kind of a swell there.
Right.
How much is that gonna go? Aren't there some trees in that?
Currently, how we have it laid out, we should not be getting into that, but any of the, and there's some, also some low bushes as well. So, we'll, my saying, we would replace them time...
Yeah, and I can, I can speak to it. There is a low...
Bradford.
There's a low area right in here that we're picking up with a, with a patch inlet. We're gonna take that drainage out. Um, and so, but we're, we're adding a few plants on the edge there for some screening, so it, that, that's gonna maintain green space area.
I think what I was remembering was that from Audubon going to the building, there's kind of a, a berm there, if you will.
It, it kinda start, Audubon's a little high, and it kinda starts and falls towards the building.
Falls down towards the building.
And so, we're, we're gonna have that, that driveway cut and meet the grade, and then we're just gonna back slope that slightly.
It's gonna be banked slightly. We're not just gonna cut in partially to...
But I would, I would think that, and again, I'm not...
Go ahead.
Having to visualize it because, you know, not knowing exactly the dimensions of how far this concrete that you're putting in is going, it almost appears that what you're doing is just putting a strip of whatever low line, what is that, or whatever along there, but everything else is gonna be gone. Is that...
Can you put that area back up?
No, it, it'll still be, currently, it's, it's grass, and I think there are a few shrubs in that area.
Yeah.
But this'll be more, uh...
He's talking about those few.
Yeah, we, we will be taking those out, and we're coming back with a, with a low hedge.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes, sir.
Correct. Correct.
You are correct on that.
That's correct. So those will be, be coming out, that's right.
So basically, on that side, everything's gonna be pretty much new.
Right.
Correct, yes, sir.
Any further questions or comments to the applicant? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the landscape irrigation plan for splash Moll car wash. Subject to standard stuff.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, we are approved, subject to the standard stuff. Moving on to the Splash Moll Lube Center, item number 13, the proposed site plan. Mr. Drummer, staff report.
And I would also remind commissioners to turn your mics on when you speak, which I believe you can leave them on if you need to. So the splash pad for the oil and li, I'm sorry, the splash oil and lube, again, it's the same applicant, the same site plan. It's the out parcel that they've split out on the final plan, on the final, on the replant. And bear with me when we get to that. All right. The- Checklist.
Do we have a checklist on?
Yes, sir, you do. So the applicant has complied with all staff comments on the oil and lube. One of the items that was added this week, which was caught, I say at the last minute, was a dumpster. Of course, you need a dumpster for any commercial activity, and that's normally something you wouldn't miss. So that was added in on the north, northwestern side of the building. So the, the traffic is expected to come in through, off of Audubon Drive and down the private drive, accessing that. So again, staff recommends approval, contingent upon meeting commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mr. Drummer. Any questions or comments, staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in addressing on the site plan, it shows a 25-foot access easement. Shouldn't that be an ingress egress joined in by all parties of that whole area? In particular, you got the bank sitting right there.
Right.
And my question was during, also during construction, is that gonna ever be closed?
We do not anticipate closing that during construction or inhibiting any kind of traffic flow to the adjacent strip center or bank. Also, we consulted with our attorney. That access easement's on the original plat for the lot. But there's also a blanket covenants and restrictions across this lot and the strip center next door that allows for cross-access ingress and egress.
It's already there.
It's already there in place, it rides with the land, therefore, we're gonna, we're gonna leave that in place. And I was on the phone with my attorney and punched in Scott, and Scott was aware of that conversation as well.
Should there be a plat note on that?
Wouldn't hurt.
We can add a note to that, yeah.
The covenant's filed.
The covenant's filed, and so it-
It's always on file with the county, anyway.
One of the, one of the checklist items on the final plat was any addition of the common access easements. But again, they mentioned that that is covered in the bill of assurance.
Further questions or comments directed to the applicant?
So the access easements are enforced through the bill of assurance?
That's correct, there's a blanket access easement.
Any further questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed site plan for splash oil and lube for Bradford Gaines, being the applicant, pending any other commissioner or staff comments.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, motion carries. Moving on to item number 14, the proposed drainage plan. Mr. Drummer?
So again, the same as the previous item. This, the drainage is satisfied from the 1999 regional drainage with, so no impacts to the actual detention needs, and so drainage plan is waived.
Thank you, Mr. Drummer. We'll move on to item number 15, the proposed landscape and irrigation plan. Staff report, please.
So again, you have the landscape plan and the irrigation plan together. They've done the same thing as they have with the previous landscape plan, showing shrubs around all of the areas that have been added in as green space with sprinkler heads, trees, with the appropriate spacing. And they're utilizing the existing landscape screen on Audubon, so that is remaining. So staff recommends approval, contingent upon any additional commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mr. Drummer. Any questions or comments to staff or to the applicant? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposed landscape and irrigation plan for splash oil and lube.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Does your applicant have any of these constructed?
He does, he has, he's got one on JFK in North Little Rock. Yeah, and then we, there's one in Rogers.
Congo?
Yeah, and there's a brand-new one in Rogers that's, there, we've got one planned for Little Rock as well. And there's one on Congo, that's right.
I have not seen a, I have not, I guess I frequentify it just by happenstance, maybe I-
Did you say Conway?
There's not one in Conway yet, Congo Road in Benton.
Congo Road in Benton.
Benton.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Fisher?
In approving the, the previous for the car wash, we also had in there proposed elevation plans, don't have one for this.
Yeah, I put that on the agenda.
We have submitted-
Yeah, they did submit the elevation plans, is that not, I'm sorry?
Well, without, unless I hear an objection from the commission, we will hear as item number 16, the proposed elevation plan for the splash oil and lube.
That was a mishap on my side, my apologies for missing that.
May I amend the agenda, Mr. Chair, to do that? What was the, any motion to do that?
Madam City Attorney?
When was the agenda published?
We're changing, it's a past public, public comment?
It was published, the agenda was published last, last week.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and amend it, just to be safe.
Motion to approve, so I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda an item number 16 for the proposed site plan for the Splash Moll Lube Center. You don't wanna come back, sir?
That's right.
Splash Lube Center.
Second.
I have a motion in a-
You catch my-
Motion in a second, any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, we will hear item number 16. Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for catching that. All right, Mr. Drummer, staff report.
So the applicant is proposing the same materials as used on the splash car wash, so not much change as far as elevation. So they've met the appropriate materials to be utilized. They've taken off any metal that's not on there, using brick as well as their porcelain tile and CMU, if I'm not mistaken, on enclosures. So staff recommends approval of the elevations, contingent upon any commissioner comments.
Any questions or comments to the applicant or staff? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve that presented. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I will now close the public hearing and move on to council liaison reports.
I appreciate you catching that, so, we're looking forward to coming to town, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen.
Move on to liaison reports, meeting for August 3rd, Mr. Green?
All right. There were really no items, there were, the third reading of ordinance 991, which really involved back pay, foreseeably cruel. They moved it to 540 hours. So, but they're making the change, then they had to go back to the first reading. So they moved back to the first reading to cover the change. Then second reading on 992, they had to do the third reading at the next meeting. So I don't know if the next meeting is a turd. Those were the two items under new business, court has 1014, talking about a large vehicle on the street. And it passed. And then certifying the amount on lanes, and it passed through from plastic county tax. On another note, under the mayor comments, as of 7/27/2020, there was 165 cases of coronavirus cases. That was as of the end of July.
Commissioner Green, I'm sorry, your mic wasn't on.
Oh, sorry.
No, but the, the lectern mic probably picked up.
You can say all that again.
I heard you laugh a clear-
I did, too.
Me, too.
Okay, good. Just make sure your mic is on if you're giving a report.
It has a little red thing on, and the green, the green thing's down here.
My bad, man.
That's all right.
Red up there.
You should've stopped me, man. That was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. August 17th, Commissioner Smith.
There were no items that pertained to the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Liaison assignment through September, September 8th, Commissioner Fisher. And September 21st is me. Got a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second, those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, we're adjourned.